Second. Move in second, all in favor. One resolution tonight to transfer six properties as part of our ongoing demolition efforts. Entertain a motion to approve this. Move on Mr. Riggi.
Second.
Say on Mr. Muto Baron, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolutions carried, seven ayes, one absent. Any other business to come before the agency? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Move. Mr. Riggi, say on Mr. Perezzo. All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agency stands adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call to order the Finance Committee. And first item on the agenda is the 2016 budget reappropriation. Ms. DeGenova.
Thank you. What you have before you is a request that is budget neutral, zero budget, no change at all, and it is reallocating funds within our codes, the city's code budget, from the, a line that had funds budgeted for the payout for a retiree. The individual is not retiring. And we're moving an amount into the out-of-grade for the codes department. And this will give the building inspector, the leader of our codes department, the flexibility as it addresses, as he, I should say, addresses business and residential workload within the, within the department. The budget had existed, always an out-of-grade budget in codes. And what we're doing is just for this year, asking for an increase to allow Mr. Schilling to, to use certain staff when necessary to, to have additional capacity.
Questions? Is that a, oh, I didn't know if you were putting your finger up or whether...
Yes, Mr. Muto. We have moved some funds around for the same individual, and the option is not to go on retirement?
Well, we, we actually, from, from the same line, you are correct. We took, I believe it was $5,000 out of that line already and moved it into, from the retirement payout budget and moved it into a stipend for the individual that you're talking about earlier. And this reflects the balance that was left afterwards.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Comments? Okay, all second, all those in favor, aye. Any other business to come before the Finance Committee? All second, that we adjourn, all those in favor, aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.
Going toward Public Service and Utilities, we have one item on the agenda, the Mohawk Harbor Street names.
Well, it says in the legislative request, the development of Mohawk Harbor will lead to the creation of new streets, some of which, right now, the city is, having become city-owned public streets. The streets will need to be formally accepted and named by the city after they're constructed. The streets that need to be placed until that happens. But the developers are requesting that the city approve the names beforehand so we can have some finality to add in using the property materials.
I know that some of the names are very hard to read on the map. Do you have any of them that are eligible?
This tiny one on the right is Mohawk Harbor Way. And then the longer one, kind of in the middle, is Harbor Side Drive.
That's right above it.
That's right above it. And then on the other end, it's Rush Street, kind of coming off the ground out there.
Any questions?
So will be made naming these streets, obviously, after they're built?
Correct. They will be built as part of the project, and then there'll be a formal process where the city will adopt those as public streets.
As public streets.
Correct.
Yeah, my only concern about the names is the Rush Street name. And the reason being, corporations change over the years, and this is something that's going to be lifelong. And maybe Rush Street will be no more in five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now. So I'd rather see a more generic thing than we have the other two, because to name it after, the name of the casino, if you name it Casino Way, or McCarthy Drive is okay, but anything...
You're surprised you get some opposition.
But it might move forward. But I think naming it after Rush Street, just in case things change, I mean, things change. We've seen that before, and that's going to be long everlasting. So I do have a concern about that one. See if we could move that to something else.
Given the discretion of the council for those names, so that if at some point it's appropriate to change it, you know, Summit Avenue, we renamed Georgiana Dix Boulevard. So there would be a process to adapt the name if in fact, let's say, you made your change in terms of the structure there, or some sort of...
Like, since we're doing, just, since we're doing it now, why not now do it now? I mean, it's something that no doubt is going to happen. The lifetime is schenectady. I don't think Rush Street will be forever. I really kind of doubt that. So it's in memory of Georgiana Dix is one thing, memory of our chairs is one thing. But I think it's quite a thing to have a street name that's an entity. So I think it's something we really should look at carefully and take, you know, not for nothing, but I don't think that belongs as a street name, Rush Street. I think it should be, even generic, Casino Drive is fine with me. But I think naming it after Rush Street, I think, is just a little pretentious and doesn't belong there.
Any other questions?
I, I can see Mr. Riggi's point, because we're basically naming it actually the developer, the owner. And so, to me, if he, if they want, the corporation wants it named, there's something within the part, if they're private property, that they could then name that as opposed to the city's street. Though I do understand that.
I got an order to go.
Any other questions?
So as far as discussing this possibility of a name change for the Rush Street, do we have any other issues with that as well?
Well, I, for one, don't have an issue. I think it's a lovely welcoming gesture into our community. I think it's a piece of street that's about this long, that has one address on it. I think that business owner is absolutely comfortable with it. It was personal discussion with the business owner. And I think, just in the effort of being efficient, that, you know, again, the mayor said we can always change it. I just, I really personally don't have any discomfort with it. My, my concern, and I did outreach on this, was to make sure that the business was comfortable with their address changing. And that's not a problem. I personally tried to lobby for Lisa Lane or Perezzo Place. Neither one of those, neither one of those, yeah, they, they, yeah. So, but I, I just, so, I think it's a matter of, you know, whether, who on the council is comfortable with it, who on the council isn't. So we may just want to take a preliminary casual vote.
I mean, I'm comfortable naming it. If down the road we have to change it, I mean, there are a lot of things that, you know, that were put in place and we, you know, change. And naming it, naming it Rush Street, I don't see a problem. It's coincide with the casino, and it'll give the owner comfort in operating his business. I don't see naming the street any problem.
I have no problem that we can change it after.
Are you comfortable voting it out of committee, Ms. Perfield?
What I would like to see, and I don't know who the person would be to, is if whoever it is, with, what's the concern of the two people currently, back to the developer. See if they're comfortable with it being something else.
If the council wants to hear, we have a representative of the developer who is here today. He might be able to give some insight.
Absolutely. Yeah, I am Tom Owens of the council.
Tom, could you just come up for the television? Everyone wants to meet you.
Hello, I'm Tom Owens of the council. So it's great to meet everybody I knew of in New York at once. So I was very interested to come today to see the process, and it's neat to be involved in an issue right away. So, yeah, I'm open to questions. So I'm not sure, is there a specific, you know, Mr. Re, Councilman Re talked about. I think the street is so short, we didn't want to have to go from, we didn't view this as a, as a large request, to be fair. And I think because under the law, the process exists to change this at any time, and this learned body would be able to take that under consideration at any moment and move that action to change it if they saw, saw fit. We thought that was very, very workable.
So could you tell me what the process was in deciding the names, then? I mean, without, I mean, a harbor, I think some of it's pretty clear, but just, you know, how the, we came to naming the streets?
I know we went through a number of names, all of the streets, ma'am, and those are the ones we came up with. I really, I was not involved in the specific day-to-day on the names that were, that were played out, but I know we worked for several weeks on different marketing ideas to try and match it with. And we tried to not conflict with other names in the area for GPS and for 911 room reasons and things like that. So there were a number of issues that we worked through. There were some that we came up with that we couldn't because they conflicted with a street that was nearby or something like that. There were a number of streets affiliated with water that were close by that we could not use. We changed from Harbor to River to, so we moved them around quite a bit.
I mean, from looking at the map, it's going to be right next to the 84 Pylon sign, I think. So I think people are going to know Rush Street is there. I just find it pretentious, you know, I'll Price Trap and Drive then on Eastern Avenue, you know, if we're going to go that route. So I just have a problem with it, that's all. That's my feelings, ma'am. I mean, we have the chance to change it now upfront instead of waiting to change it in the future, so you don't have to worry about it. If it's generic, you don't have to worry about changing it.
What's the street currently that the business?
It's not street.
Okay, but there's the business on a new...
Oh, STS. Yes, STS, too. Yep.
I'm just trying to get the logistics of exactly where it is.
And, you know, the, because I had this conversation today, too. The concern is, you know, you Google "not" and you have "not terrace," you have "not street," you know, there can be easy confusion. So just in helping guide people that are coming in from out of town via GPS, certainly it doesn't have to be Rush Street, but that's what's proposed, so, you know.
Casino could do that, too. We call it Casino Drive. That would do it also, right?
Yeah, I just, to, to, personally, I think Rush Street is more, Rush is a thing, right? I mean, casino is, if we don't, if someday there's no casino there, it's going to be weird. If someday there's no casino there, Rush Street's not going to be weird, because Rush is a thing also. But just, my two cents. I, I just, for me, for me personally, it's not an issue, so.
And this will be a city street, but will it be within the whole casino complex?
Well, it's outlined in the maps, it'll go on the one side of it. It's not a hot street, and the other street's coming off it, going back down to the mixed-use houses.
So this is kind of that place where we had to drive in at time, where you come up not, you kind of drive in there? Okay.
Any other questions? Is there anybody willing to move on?
I, I kind of go back to what I said before, if there were other considerations, and if the developer's willing to, to look at other considerations, or if you brought that back.
I'm not going to bring it back. I think we would like to get some resolution moving forward. I mean, there's a lot of marketing and things to get out to people and to establish the address. So we would like a response on this if it's known, but we'll take it back and we'll, we'll adjust.
Mr. Ferrari? Can I suggest that, can, can we move it out of committee pending an answer on whether the developer is comfortable and we can always pull it next Monday night if we need to? Or, I'd rather not hold it if we don't have to hold it. So, I mean, they can come back and say, yes, we're willing to change it, or no, we're not, and then we can bring it back if we need to bring it back, if they say, no, we're not. You know, I'm just trying to... It sounds like your real question is whether they're amenable to changing it or not, so...
And this two weeks can make a difference?
I know every time we, I can't answer that honestly right now. I, I know every week makes a difference, sir, as we keep moving down to the right.
We should have brought it to us two months ago, then.
No, no question. It's a great question. And the casinos are ahead of schedule. I mean, they're working very hard to get this up. They've put a lot of work and effort into the ground already, as many of you have seen over there. They're, they're, I think, several months now ahead, which is good for everyone.
I think the main issue is the hotel needs an address. The hotel doesn't have an address. It's for marketing and different...
Delivery purpose.
Things that they need, right. So that's, that's the real, that's the real thing, is that the hotel has moved to a point where it now needs an address, so.
But our documentation said they really can't, the full acceptance can't fix things to look fully constructed. So what is the timeframe you're talking about?
Yeah, the ownership of it. That's later next year, or late this year to early next year.
I'd really like to see if there were, if there's some other consideration, if we could just, if two weeks isn't going to be a major concern.
I'll ask one more time, that we pass it out of committee pending an answer from the developer, and we can pull it on Monday. Because it, to me, it seems like if the developer comes back and says, yes, that's fine, we'll name it Smith Street, and everybody's happy with that, we can pass it on Monday and they can do business that they need to do. And it can always be pulled, or we can go into roll call and it can be voted down on Monday or whatever.
Voting down will be whatever to two if it comes that there's no change, so I'm not comfortable with that myself.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else to come before Public Service and Utilities?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I will call to order Government Operations. And we have one item on the agenda, and that is a call for a public hearing for the New York State Unified Permit. I believe Mr. Funk is not here, and there's really nobody here to, Mr. Falatiko, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, from my discussions, this attribute, that we did not need the council to act on this based on further review of it.
That we don't need to call for a public hearing?
Correct. There was some question about whether we needed to change our code in terms of setting up a certain permit for solar panel installation, or whether it was covered by our permits we have right now. And the discussion I had this attribute made it pretty clear that it's covered with what we have right now. We just would have to change one of the documents that we use for permitting. So for this, I'm comfortable that we can bring it back in two weeks if we need to, but we don't need any action by the council right now.
Okay. And just for clarification for the public, what this would do is align our permitting process with the state's permitting process, correct?
Correct.
As far as putting solar panels up and, but it would not have any impact on the average citizen, no raising of fees or any of that nature?
It's really, though, maybe municipalities are kind of using the same permit document when you apply for a permit to put up solar panels. And I believe that we can do that without changing our code, which is always my preference, if we can do something without changing the code.
Okay. Very good. Any other business to come before Government Operations? Who wants it? Who wants it?
He can have it.
Okay, Mr. Ferrari, seconded by Mr. Palamani, we are adjourned.
Call the Order Administrative Efficiency. The first item for discussion is the tax bill changes. Evol received a copy of this. This was worked with Mr. Waterfield. He put this together. And basically, it's to call a little bit more attention to those who've had issue with paying online payments and not realizing there's a fee, even though on the website it clearly says there are fees. This just clearly states one additional place on the tax bill right up front, that first of all, you can pay for your tax bill online, and secondly, that you do have an extra charge if you pay either in-person or online with credit or debit cards. So, any questions?
Yes, I fully support this change, but I did ask, the last time we brought this up, how much stock we had of pre-printed...
Is minimal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
This is, this is a draft, or this, if agreed upon, this will go out into the next tax bill?
If you have changes, all Mr. Waterfield asks is that we make them all at once, so that when he does order the bills that we're not constantly changing.
It says paidonline.com. Like, can we put a definite link that takes you straight to the page or the tab where the assault service is, rather than dot com will take you to the website, and you have to still navigate?
I don't know if that's possible, but I will check into it.
Yeah, you can check in that, I think it's doable, that slash to that link.
Anything else?
Trying to make it easy for everybody.
Right. And make it so that there's no mistakes on people's parts of not realizing there's a fee.
Just for general information, this is not just the city. It's anytime anybody uses a credit card or debit card, buying gas or supermarket or something, those fees are applied.
I think that probably the purpose of this was that most, a lot of people didn't seem to know that the city charged that extra charge that everybody else did. For some reason, they didn't think that the city did that, and that's how the conversation came up.
Because it's automatically incorporated in the prices you pay, whereas with the city, we don't do that unless you actually use that service.
Just a reminder, we're going to have a new website, so that slash may change sometime very soon.
Yeah, well, whatever is it, just put a slash and link it directly to the tab.
We just want to make sure it's the current one.
Anything else? All right, the second item for discussion is the employee recognition program.
Are you moving this out?
Do we need to vote on that? It's not legislation, it's just a change, clerical change.
It's the employee recognition program, and tonight we have Ms. White with us, our human resources personnel. And you've also received a copy of this prior to the meeting. Basically, tried to incorporate some of the changes that people asked for, as well as coming up with nomination forms so you could see what it would entail. There are three programs remaining, the annual recognition, as well as immediate recognition and service awards. There are nomination forms, which Ms. White and myself have put together, and I believe they take care of most of the current concerns that people had. You will notice that, given some of the comments, last time we discussed, there are additional awards for the annual recognition award. We changed it to one per bureau versus one per city employee staff. But otherwise, it's not too much change other than the nomination forms. Are there any questions? Okay, don't see any?
No, I, I'm digesting. I'll just state my opinion. First of all, I think this is great. I think recognizing the recycling staff and the garbage staff is wonderful. I think recognizing people that have given long periods of service to the city is an important thing, especially at retirement and all of that. This just makes me nervous, because it's not usually a council, this is a manager-to-employee thing, and this is, to me, not a council function. And then I also think putting the council in the position of making subjective choices also makes me nervous. The pins, I would like to know where we were going to get that money from, and if we've done any kind of cost analysis, because I think that could be very costly over time. And my only other thought, and this is coming from an HR background, too, is that some managers are more apt to write recommendations than others are. Doesn't make them a better manager or a worse manager, but one manager may write five recommendations for their employees where another manager, that's just not, their strong suit's just not the way they're managed. And so then it, that it's like, well, what happens in that case? You know, it just, I feel like it has a potential, and I'm one person, and if, so, it has a potential to put us in a really awkward situation, given how structured it is. So that's just my only concern.
Okay. Just to try, since there's some of those. First of all, it's not only managers who are, that are capable of putting someone forward for an award. Secondly, as for the council, I just thought would be appropriate for the council to do something for the employees, to show recognition. It doesn't preclude management or the mayor of doing or not doing anything.
Right, I understand.
So it's, just would be an additional thing to show appreciation for their hard work. And the pins cost, I think, have, I didn't bring it with me, it's not overly expensive. So it's not nearly, I don't think it's the big concern, I have financial concerns as well, that, that is, I don't think that's an issue, so.
I guess I would want to see the pin part before we did anything about that. You have anything to add, Ms. White?
I was working with John a little bit. I did have a couple concerns, in some bureaus, when they have a couple people.
Okay, you got to come up here, sorry.
We need to put you on camera, sir.
This is your, your debut, right?
We did, I did have a number of concerns as well. I agree with you on a number of things, as it being a little subjective, and that they're, again, in some bureaus, only a couple people. But I do like the idea of recognizing employees for service. And again, I know that, like, our recent collection did do some heroic things. I know that firefighters certainly have been very brave, and as well as some police officers. And I did tell John, the employee of the year kind of thing made me a little bit nervous as well. But if it's something that you guys wish to explore further...
But that's one, you suggested the bureau concept of one per bureau.
That is something that could work, but, you know, it's really up to you guys, you know, the, you know, the employee, the manager-to-employee, you know, you may, after a while, there's only just a couple people, you know, run out of people if you're going to be doing one per department or per bureau.
But when we had our discussions, did you not say the bureaus were bigger? And that's why we went with that instead of a department?
Yeah, I guess you could have, you know, I guess, I guess how you, I'm sorry, how you define the bureau is being, you know, HR or assessment or IT.
Well, I thought in our discussions, we were talking about big, massive groups, yeah.
Well, those were a couple of my concerns, but I think that in all, Mr. Palamani brings a great employee recognition program as far as, certainly as far as the retirement is concerned. I also didn't want anybody to feel slighted for people maybe in the past who did not get recognized for retiring, but we can only look forward, so. That's all I have.
Yeah, that was another thought that I had, too, with the fire and police. We have so much to recognize with our fire and police, and I know that each of those departments do their own awards, so I didn't know what that would look like in the big picture of things. And, and, trust me when I tell you, I think it's a great idea for us. We have a lot of employees that work very, very hard in the city. I'm just, it just, some of it makes me just a little nervous, because I don't want to get into a situation where we're slighting some people and not... get into a situation where we're slighting some people and not, you know, I just, I'm just...
On the other hand, this isn't T-ball. I mean, not everybody's going to get a trophy, so, I mean, I think it's one way of recognizing workers, but also installing a little healthy competition as well. And that's just my opinion, and I understand your concerns.
I have a question. So is it, since there are concerns around the, you know, employees in a bureau, et cetera, does it, and, and everyone seems to agree on the fact that if something, someone does something heroic, like the first response is from waste, and I can't remember the other department did, and also for years of service, those are things that most people seem to agree on, that's something that just makes sense. Is that a place to start? And maybe then we can do this in, you know, in the step process, we start here, we do this, and we just kind of like start looking at the rest of it? And maybe even trying to work through some of the concerns and trying to get it as, well, we won't say perfect, but as user-friendly, and so that no one feels slighted, it becomes less subjective, we, you know, because the point of this is to ideally raise employee morale. And so we want to make sure that nothing, that we don't do anything to implement anything that does the reverse of that. So if we took those two things that are, you know, I mean, either if you're heroic or you're not, I mean, and years of service, that's again, something that, you know, you can, it's not, that's subjective, you've worked those number of years, you know, you help save somebody, it's like, help them get medical help, and those are pretty clear cut. So we could start there and have those two things as something we could do, and then try to work through the rest of it, I think would be a good place to start.
Anything else?
Yes, just one, I mean, I'm going to go back to the original, where it says, we shouldn't look at one individual per department, we should be more open, because you might have two or three individuals from each department that exceeded the expectation. So what are we going to do, and then just say, okay, wait next year? So I think it should be open based on performance across the board.
Okay.
And not say it's one per bureau, or, you know, should be open.
So maybe this is already something you just said, but what if we just made, what if we considered just a little less structure and said to people that the council would like to receive recommendations to honor our city employees when they've done a good job, right? I mean, like, so that we weren't forced into naming an employee for the year, a bureau for the year, or whatever the case may be, but that we were getting ongoing feedback, like, I don't know if a department head came to you, or whether it was just a story that you knew, because you know some of the workers in sanitation, or whatever the case may be, but that's a perfect example, you know? If that went unknown by us, it would have been sad, because they, you know, it was a great public recognition. So maybe we make it an open process. How, I mean, how is that HR-wise for you?
Yeah, I don't think that that's a problem. I mean, again, what if you didn't have an employee in the department who, you know, did anything good, and, you know, but if you...
Not here, in the city of Schenectady!
Straight up.
I have a little less structure. You know, I definitely was in favor of the two in my discussions with John. I thought that, you know, those were definitely not subjective, it was what it was, you know, and, you know, so I don't, from my perspective, I don't see any issue, any issue with that moving forward. I think it's a good thing. I think it will boost some employee morale, and I think it's good. Yeah?
Yes, I agree.
All right, we can take the annual recognition up and go forward with the immediate and service?
Well, I mean, if you, obviously, you know, it's something that you came up with, and so, but if you wanted to have continued discussions, I think it's certainly worth that, and, you know, getting it to a place where people are comfortable.
No, that's fine. That's why it's a discussion item, we're bringing it forward. I mean, I had worked with Ms. White, and we were, I thought we were on the same page. Apparently not. And, so, that's fine, we can bring it back. Any further discussion?
I guess the whole thing, as I say, Ms. Brazo, Ms. Porterfield, we don't want this to work in reverse somehow, we're going to be declining morale. I remember in school, when certain students were recognized, naturally, you think you're the best, and I'm sure if you ask the employees, they're saying, I'm doing a good job, why didn't I get an award? So it could work in reverse, I think we have to be very careful of that. And I do agree that this is actually an administrative job, I think, to recognize employees, but that's fine if we do it, but we just have to be very careful that we're not making, you know, some people feel that they're being slighted, and I think that could have a reverse effect on all of that. So whether you some, we should study and look at, and see how it works.
Any new business, or any more questions, comments?
But just to recap, so, do you want to rework what we're going to move forward and bring it back in two weeks along with cost for pins? And then put pending the other items?
We'll just move forward the immediate and service awards, not come back with some cost figures for pins.
Okay. And I think a form for a department head's to use might be helpful too, so that...
There's some there.
Right, so, well, I, I don't know if it's going to change at all, because it's all the time, but just, you may want to just, we'll take a look at that again, just that it's easy for them to utilize, just with the criteria maybe at, at the top changed, or whatever the case may be. So, so can, so put on in two weeks.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any new business?
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Call to order city development and planning. First item, ceremonial resolution, Friends of the Library. Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. Yes, Karen Bradley and a very young lady that's an intern, or actually works for the library with her, came to the Hamilton Hill Mayhem Association meeting this month. And as you all know, the Phillips, or Library Literacy Center is, has been constructed on State Street. And in having a discussion regarding that, she told us how, how, how much the Friends of the Library had given financial support to that, and they said, come outside with what the county does. So at that meeting, she suggested that we do a resolution, which I partly agree with, and so I'd like to move that forward, but not to do until April. In April, they're having their 50th gala, and it's also National Library Week, so that just seemed like a good time to do it, as opposed to do it now, but to do it when they're having all these other celebrations. But since I've been asked around the, we can bring that forward, and we can move it and then be ready in April to actually do the resolution.
So the motion will be to...
To move.
Recognize them April what?
I don't know, 2016. I don't know the exact date.
Okay.
Can you please provide?
I will give you the date eventually. So you want to know which council meeting that would be? Mr. Thor.
First or second?
Okay, I'll let you know.
It can be a surprise.
Motion to move this? The two of us.
Oh, Mr. Tuva?
All in favor? Aye. Next item on the agenda is ceremonial resolution. Ryan Wobley, Union College Senior, Ms. Brazo?
Yep, so Ryan Wobley was actually our intern here in the clerk's office, and he has been recently named to the College Sports Information Directors of America Academic Team, which is quite a thing. And I'm sure it was his time here with the city that really excelled him to the level of excellence that he is now, has now attained. So I thought it would be really nice to bring him in and do a ceremonial resolution for his accomplishment, and as well, at the same time, we could thank him for his service to the city.
Have a motion?
I'll hold it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. The next item will be pulled for the next cycle, the presentation from the Schenectady Compere Library. I ask that it be put on to the next cycle.
March 14th, council meeting.
Next item, review zoning change, parking requirements, public hearings, February 22nd, this is my team, you all addressing.
You know, I saw my name on this, and maybe it was put there just because of its legislation, but I haven't really been involved in working on it, I saw a copy, and I believe we have a development today, your proposals.
I think it's just a reminder that we have a public hearing.
It's a reminder we have a public hearing, okay, so we don't have to do anything here?
No.
Okay. Thanks. Next item is purchase of six Sura properties for demolition.
This is just the corresponding item from the Sura meeting, just to accept, transfer ownership of these properties to the city.
Any questions? May I have a motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next site, next item is the sale of 32 Eagle Street and the sale of 2334 Campbell Avenue, and this will be moved into executive session?
Both items.
Both items? Are we recessing?
Yep.
We have a motion to recess. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll order claims, entertain a motion to go to executive session, some of them. All in favor?
Aye.
Only one person to get out? I got a new job.